All right, are you ready for us? I'm going to start the meeting, I don't know if we're on air yet. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for February 24th and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lynn, do you have any announcements?
Yes. One of the items, is this where you want me to talk about the jamboree now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. One of the items on your agenda tonight was for a revisit of the street closure request for the girls lacrosse jamboree. You had tabled it at your last meeting on February 18th. I am requesting that you continue the tabling until the March 16th meeting to allow time for the departments to continue to review this application and consider it in relation to Long Meadow Days that's happening the same day. We are scheduled department-wide to have a traffic committee meeting on March 4th, where we will review this and Long Meadow Days at the same time. So I'd like to report back to you, March 16th, for you to vote on this at that point.
Does anyone have problems with holding off an agenda item? Okay.
I won't be here that long.
All right, and any other announcements?
Let's see. Another agenda item that I don't need a vote on, I just want to give you an update on. At your November 26th Select Board meeting, the Board considered a project change order for relocating soil with asbestos-containing material at the new DPW facility on Dwight Road. The owner's project manager, Colliers, attended that meeting on November 26th and recommended that the Board reject that PCO. The belief was that the PCO amount was too high and that we could receive a less costly resolution if the project had been put out to bid. We did that. Let me back up. The cost of that PCO on November 26th was $81,338, and you did vote that night to reject that PCO. So an invitation for bid was released in early January and the scope of that work included the onsite relocation of approximately 2,900 plus or minus cubic yards of soil with ACM material. We received three bids. The lowest bidder was awarded that work, and that was for the amount of $48,276.98. We reviewed the bid and discussed it with Colliers, and I awarded that bid to Salt Marsh Industries, and a notice to proceed and a contract was issued two weeks ago, or last week. So that work will be happening now, and that was definitely a less costly approach.
Okay, why don't we move from that directly into the new DPW change order? Mary Beth, you want to come on up? I'm going to hold.
There's no DPW change order to address this evening.
Oh, is an adult center one?
I have an adult center change order to address.
Okay, all right, that. I'm going to have Select Board comments after, when we start moving into the meeting. This is supposed to be a special meeting on finance and goals, and also finance and the charter. We're not going to discuss the policy because too much else got piled on tonight's meeting, but I'm going to have resident comments after we finish up this business.
Okay, great. Mary Beth Bergeron, 497 Inverness Lane. Just for clarification, the DPW change order that we expected to be discussing this evening is off the table for further conversation, and we have not made any decision on that change order. We did however meet this evening at 6:00, and we reviewed six change orders, only one of which comes under the purview of the Select Board, and that is change order PCO number 018. It has to do with patio lighting in the rear of the building. In the rear of the building, it's quite dark. This is the adult center. There's a patio that extends in fairly far into the grass area, and that transition from the grass to the pavers is not lit, was not lit in the original plan. And we requested that the contractor give us a price on lighting that with bollards as it goes around the rear of the building. We expect that the adult center will be having some evening programs, entertainment of some sort, one would think, based on the design of the building. And then in addition to that, the gymnasium we expect will be used in the evening and as it goes to dusk or even the dark without having some lighting back there. It could be a safety issue. We received the change order in the amount of $26,001 to install bollards in the rear of, that would be set inside the pavers and downlit onto the pavement area, the paver area, for safety reasons. And so that is the change order that we have to discuss this evening with you.
Any questions? Mark?
Is the funds for this available from the contingency?
Absolutely.
Okay, so this is really just a more scope change than?
It is more of a scope change than anything else.
And is there a particular reason, was this just an oversight during the design phase?
I think it was really just an oversight, yes. Not realizing, I think not taking into consideration what would be happening at that building in the evening at dusk or even in the dark in the winter hours, that that back area does not have sufficient lighting.
Yeah, just one last.
And particularly with elderly people, when you have a transition from, let's say, a grassy area to a pavement area, we don't want it to be a trip hazard.
Just one last question. Has somebody made an assessment that it's cheaper to do it now than wait for the building to be done and then go try and install it?
Oh, clearly it's cheaper to do it now because you've got to get the power out into that area with each of the bollards. So it's definitely, otherwise we'd be taking up the pavers and putting it in afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the change order?
I will approve PCO 018 for the adult center in the amount of $26,001.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, where did the $1 come from?
You're always complaining they're even.
That's the problem.
Except for coffee.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your work. Now I will do any resident comments before we start the meeting.
Good evening. Pete Landon, Five Meadow Brook Road, Chair of the Audit Committee, and I was advised by the Chair to, knowing that on the agenda tonight there was changes, financial changes to the charter being discussed, and the Audit Committee wants to register our disagreement with the majority recommendation of the Charter Review Committee, of which I was on, and to the language that has been added to the current charter language, and I have a copy of it, I can leave what they're recommending, the paragraph. And there was some levity over the whole thing because it was a three-person subcommittee that went and worked on this, and they came back, and we looked at the language, we didn't agree with it from the get-go, or I didn't, and the Audit Committee didn't. Obviously, the other folks on the Charter Review did find it acceptable. David will probably be addressing that tonight, but we, the levity came in when we called up the language, which I have word-for-word for you, and we found it in the charter at Dewey Beach, Delaware. So the charter at Dewey Beach, Delaware, has the exact 10 lines, word-for-word, that was being recommended by the subcommittee of the Charter Review to go into the Long Meadow Charter. So I'll just leave that as an exhibit. And anybody ever been to Dewey Beach? I've never, wherever the heck it is, Delaware. So that's our recommendation. I know you said you weren't voting on it tonight, but David was going to describe the whole matter. I think the charter language as now establishes 2004, works very well. It's fully vetted against GFOA standards and other audit language. You know, we've had two committees that set up the language on it. Mr. Persuric was on some of the early ones, and when we put together the original language for the Audit Committee, and Walter Gunn and a few others back in 2005, the first Audit Committee that the town had. And I just want to mention one thing. Ernie Welker retired, and he's an amazing person who did a wonderful service for the town, so I wanted to mention that if he's listening.
Thank you very much. Okay, and now we'll go into the meeting where Charter Amendment Recommendations per Charter Review Committee. Attorney Martel?
Good evening, everybody. When I was getting ready to come down tonight, I did make a summary sheet on financial matters that are...
Thank you. Thank you.
Before I get any further, since I'm going to just say a couple things about what Peter just said. The matter of the composition and function of the Audit Committee was thoroughly discussed in the Charter Review Committee, of which I was the Chair. There was some sentiment that we didn't need an Audit Committee. There was some sentiment on how its function should be phrased, and whether the language came from Bethany Beach or Rehoboth or wherever the beach was that Peter talked about, I don't think is material. We kicked it around pretty thoroughly, and the language and the, that we came up with that's in the proposed provisions of the charter, we're comfortable with. Mr. Landon was heard throughout those discussions. He filed a minority report, and that's attached to the Charter, the report of the Charter Review Committee. So I don't really think I need to go into it any further than that.
All right, thank you for these proposed revisions, this breakdown. First, I wanted to ask, Mark, did you ever get the original report with the minority report attached to it?
I don't know if I did.
Yeah, I'll make sure you get that. Any questions for Attorney Martel in regards to the Finance Committee section?
I guess these are all changes to Section 7, is that it?
Yes.
That were in the summary that we were given? The markup summary?
Well, it's all in the summary that you were given, what we did, and then there's a, did you get, did you all get the red line?
Yes.
Copy? Oh, there it is, okay.
So I guess the question I would have is, this, the, this has the appearance, if not the actuality, of expanding the authority of the Finance Committee? Is that a?
No, I don't think that's a fair assessment. There was some concern about the timing. I think the primary thing was the timing of the delivery of the proposed budget from the town manager to the Finance Committee. And the Finance Committee wanted to get it at the same time that it was delivered by the town manager to the Select Board. So it used to be that the Finance Committee would get it after the Select Board had it. And the Finance Committee came to us and said, "Look, if we're going to have a meaningful input, we want to get that draft budget from the town manager as soon as possible." So the, I don't think the function of the Finance Committee was materially changed. It was just the timing issue as to when it got the budget and what it did with it after.
But one of the things you said is if they're going to have meaningful input. My, my understanding, and maybe this is because I'm looking at the old charter or maybe the pre-charter definition of the Finance Committee, was that the Finance Committee's responsibility was to evaluate the budget as it was prepared to go to town meeting and recommend to the town meeting aspects of the budget, as opposed to prepare the budget, which I thought was the town manager and staff going through the Select Board and then being proposed to the town meeting from, through that town manager Select Board to town meeting process with the Finance Committee along the way saying, "Yeah, we recommend," as opposed to the Finance Committee building the budget, which it?
Which it doesn't.
But getting it at the same time the Select Board does means they're not getting the budget necessarily that's going to town meeting.
No, they're not. The town manager drafts the budget, and under the proposed change of the charter, that draft budget goes to the Finance Committee and to the Select Board at the same time. Once the committee gets the proposed budget, that triggers the notice of the Finance Committee's hearing on the budget. It then holds its public hearing, sends its comments over to the Select Board, then the Select Board comes up with the budget, which it sends to the town clerk in sufficient time for the Finance Committee to prepare comments that are attached to the budget as it is presented in the warrant. So that's, that's the scenario. I don't think it's a material change. I think it's just a procedural change to get the Finance Committee a more timely and appropriate role in being advisory to the town meeting, which is what the charter says is the function of the Finance Committee.
But what you described is they're trying, they want to be advisory to the Select Board. They want to make their comments and hold the meeting and then advise the Select Board.
Well, the Select Board then comes up with a budget that's get printed in the warrant, and they can do whatever it wants with the advice of the Finance Committee.
That's true.
I think we're, it's, we're talking about a timing thing. If, now that we're up to such a huge budget, it's been very difficult for a Finance Committee in a short period of time to go through something that, that takes many meetings and weeks to really dig through, and I think I've, when we get the presentation by the town manager, this year I invited the Finance Committee, but I don't think it means the Finance Committee's expecting to expand its role just because they have it earlier, just means they'll be able to sufficiently go through the budget and have their questions answered also. So it's a timing thing. I don't think it's changing roles and responsibilities anywhere here.
That's correct. That's certainly our take.
But I, just, but the Finance Committee is going to make, must, and I think it's by state, you know, definition, make a recommendation to the town meeting.
Correct.
So are they going to make their recommendation based on the budget they saw?
No.
But they're going to then go back and look at the final budget before it goes to town meeting and do this again?
Well, once the, once the Select Board approves the budget after it has gotten it back from the Finance Committee, after the Finance Committee held its public hearing, this is in seven, the new section 7-6A, the committee provides its recommendations to the town clerk in sufficient time to be included in the warrant. So that's, after, after you come up with a budget that you want printed in the warrant, that budget is the budget that gets, has attached to it, the comments from the Finance Committee, which are printed in the warrant for everyone to see, so people who look at the budget have the, know where the Finance Committee stands.
Right, I mean, the, the Select Board hasn't in the past made massive changes to the budget, but there have been changes to the budget at the Select Board level, and I just want to make sure that the budget that the?
I mean, I think that would, that, that capacity would continue.
Right, and I'm not questioning, I just want to make sure that the, that the budget that the Finance Committee is recommending or not recommending to town meeting is the budget going to town meeting and not the budget that's coming to the Select Board, because there may be differences, and to have the Finance Committee spend all their time on a, if you will, the budget proposal as opposed to the approved budget, you know, may be a, pardon me for saying this, a waste of their time or misuse of their time.
Well, I think the Finance Committee now, under the charter as it exists, provides input for the town meeting warrant.
Because they get the budget after the Select Board.
Well, and they still would.
So now they're going to get it twice.
They're getting the budget after the Select Board now. The, the change would be that the budget, the town manager's proposed budget would go to the Finance Committee and the Select Board at the same time, rather than have the Finance Committee wait to get its first look at the budget after it's passed on to them by the, by the Select Board. So what we're suggesting is the Finance Committee gets that additional time to look at the budget so that, because it would receive it at the same time that the Select Board does, rather than waiting for the Select Board to finish its review and then pass it on to the Finance Committee. And that, that was at the request of the Finance Committee because they, they felt they needed that additional time.
Just one last thing. When, the day this, this town manager transmits the budget to the Select Board, it's a public document. It's available to the Finance Committee and anybody else in town who wants it and always has been. So to, you know, to say that they didn't get it until, because their, their job, if you will, their, the, the town meeting is, in my opinion, expecting the Select, the Finance Committee to make a recommendation to the town meeting. Now, I will say that probably out of, you know, two out of the last five years, the recommendations been made on the floor of the town meeting as opposed to in the written document, which has been potentially problematic, but, you know, it's always been available to?
Whether there was a breakdown in the real world, or, we heard from the Finance Committee that they wanted to make sure that they were formally included in the loop to receive the proposed budget from the town manager at the same time that the Select Board did, and then they could go about their work.
Richard?
Yeah, why?
Why?
Yeah, why?
Because there could have, there, we understood that there was a delay from the town manager, the town manager gets it to the Select Board, and that the Finance Committee was not getting it until some period of time after the Select Board got it.
Yeah, they were getting it after it was approved by the Select Board.
Pardon?
They were getting it after it was approved by the Select Board.
Correct. What they wanted to do was to get a look at that proposed budget from the town manager so that it could begin its review of the budget at the, at the same time that the Select Board did.
Okay, well, let's take it one link, one link farther down the road then. So they've got the document they're reviewing in a vacuum, and we've got a document over here we're reviewing in a vacuum. And they come up with all these recommendations. How do we know that we're going to have enough time to sit down and give that an honest debate for incorporation or rejection on the town budget for the approval process?
Well, there's, there's no deadlines in the charter as to how quickly the Finance Committee needs to complete its review. There's a deadline for getting the warrant out.
Well, it is, and there's also restraints on the, on the town's part for producing these documents and getting them up, because there is quite a change in the procedures, Dave, as you say it. One, they were dealing with a product that was already adopted, and which is?
Adopted by, by the Select Board.
That's right, and that's appropriate too, because then they were either going to make their recommendations or not make their recommendations, based on their feelings for the adoption of that budget at the town meeting. And now you're saying they're going to have the budget over here working in a vacuum, and we're over here working in a vacuum, and we approved the budget.
Well, you haven't approved the budget to be printed in the warrant until after you have gotten the comments from the Finance Committee, under, under our proposal.
Who says? We don't, I don't have a timetable or anything here.
Well, we did not, we did not proceed to the point of inserting a timetable. We relied on input from the Finance Committee, and this, this, these changes met with the concerns that they had.
But the reality of them?
You still, you still need to decide what you're going to do.
The reality of our budget cycle, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's pretty condensed. It's not a long, long period of time, because we usually have four or five meetings in a row by the time we get it, to get it resolved and get it out, am I?
Well, let's ask this week. So this year, everyone's getting the budget March 2nd. We have to vote on it by March 16th?
March 16th is the day, it's a date that's on the calendar right now.
But when does it have to be finished in order to make the warrant this year?
Again, what we've always done is we've worked backwards, because there are things within the charter that the town manager had to have in so many days, so on and so forth, that has to go to the printer. So basically what's happening, if this is, let's disregard this proposal, is that the Select Board will get it on the 2nd, Finance Committee will get it on the 2nd. Last couple of years, they've always got it simultaneously. The Select Board will meet over the next two weeks with a target date of the 16th of March in order to have a finalized budget that would then go to the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee roughly at that point in time and over the last couple of years had about a two-week window that they needed to make their recommendations and have a final report in, into DEB so that we could get the warrant printed and delivered to the residents as required by the town bylaws. So that somewhat being dictated by the timetable of the printer and the bylaws where it must be delivered no later than two weeks prior to the town meeting, I believe. So we work backwards from all those dates. They have about two weeks.
But?
And then it's that window that the Finance Committee wanted expanded, so they had more than two weeks.
Well, we have two weeks, as it is. We're getting it the 2nd, and we have to deliver it out by the 16th. But what I find is curious is that it goes the 16th to the Finance Committee, but according to what you're describing, their recommendations never come, we never see what their recommendations are till the warrant's published.
Historically, they, they would give their recommendations after the Select Board has produced its budget.
Okay.
This, this, I don't want to say it just changes it around. It sounds like the Finance Committee shall make a report to the Select Board?
Yeah.
On their recommendations, but then after the Select Board finishes its budget, then the Finance Committee makes its recommendation to the town clerk, which I believe is, that's the one that is submitted and printed in the warrant.
Correct.
Right, so they're making recommendations to the Select Board in that two-week window, and then afterwards make a final recommendation to, for the warrant process.
But we're, we've already voted on the budget. There's no room to take their recommendations and no communications back and forth.
That's what I was trying to bring up.
So we're now going to go back and we'll just be surprised on the floor. So I think one of the things we were looking for was a better communication so it doesn't become their, our budget and then their comments without any?
I mean, to the extent that the, our proposed changes don't properly reflect the real world as you deal with your budget, well, that would be something that you certainly have the right to make changes in our recommendation, because presumably something is going to go to a town meeting for a revision to the charter.
Okay.
I guess, Dave, my point is it would, it would be very reasonable to have, both parties could get the budget at the same time. It is also immensely reasonable to have those two parties then get together and talk about the proposals so that we know, we have the feelings from Finance on why maybe they disagree with something in there or why they agree with something. And it doesn't seem like we've got the time period to bring those two parties back together before we put the stamp of approval on that budget.
Well, I mean, certainly.
Might be something we have to work on.
Because it's March 2nd to the 16th. I mean, that's, that's just two weeks.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know whether it's in the cards, given the timing of printing the warrant, to move the budget submission date by the town manager ahead by a couple weeks.
Or if the fact they've got it two weeks ahead of time than what they're expecting, so they don't need it another two weeks after the 16th. That may be one week.
I think, whether it's the charter or if it's bylaw, that the 2nd is actually a date that is early for the, for the town manager to present their budget to the Select Board. So they're, they're, the town manager's ahead of the game already, and I believe that, again, I don't know if it's in the bylaw or if that's in the charter with the, with the budget proposal.
So we pushed too early this year.
The timing of the budget.
I mean, and that's the problem, Rory, is, and I think what's come out here is, you know, the Finance Committee and the Select Board get the budget, the proposed town manager's budget approximately two weeks before it needs to go out the door, needs, before it needs to be published. The question is, you know, if the Finance Committee can, you know, can meet and do all their works in two or three days, and we can hold off two or three days, this system of getting comments from the Finance Committee would work, but the fact is, they're going to take a week to do it, which would then compress everything we have to do into a week to do it, and, and the communication in between, and that, you know, really makes things, makes things tough. And, you know, from my perspective, it's, and if we're each doing our own thing in, in parallel for two weeks, you know, at what point do we bring them together and do, and accept, look at the recommendations of the, of the other set of eyes?
Yeah, because there's no place on, we don't want to go into the town floor.
Right.
That's ridiculous.
We want to know ahead of time.
And we've got enough of that going on already in our society.
So why don't we, we, I think we've been able to figure out what these issues are on this section, so why don't we think about it? Again, we're not voting tonight. We'll take it to the meeting on the 16th, and the Finance Committee can, you know, We'll take it to the meeting on the 16th, and the Finance Committee can, you know, make their input like Mr. Landon did for the audit, before we make any decisions. So thanks for really working on the finance part. Going to the Capitol, one last question?
Hold on, one second.
Yeah?
Hold on, just slow down.
Okay.
Are we going to, what are you saying? I know you said a lot of words, but tell me exactly what the Chair was saying there.
Okay, what I said, okay, is that, these are the recommendations, just like we made changes the last time we did our Charter votes on the administrative. We can come in on the 16th and make other changes. Finance can make their recommendations, and we will battle out the wording and make the votes the next meeting.
Well, that may be good for the last budget meeting that you ever chair in your lifetime.
Yeah.
But that's not good going forward, because that's not enough time.
Oh, you want to go back to April?
We need to have a meeting with Finance with one solid night where we can sit and talk about the budget. If they have substantive information and changes they'd like to make, or for consideration.
No, I'm talking right now just the Charter revisions. You know, we want to have another meeting with Finance. We can, I can definitely set that up. I'm just talking about Charter changes. If we're going to get it on the Springtown meeting, we need to, when do we need to have those revisions done, Paul?
Again, it goes to the printer at the end of March.
The end of March, the end of March.
If we wait till the 16th of March to finalize the Charter changes, we've already blown this budget season, right?
Well, I'm-
We've definitely blown this budget season.
But it doesn't mean, just like I invited them March 2nd to come and hear the budget. So that first part's already taken care of this year. Whether we're going to have another joint meeting, I could sit down with their Chair and decide when we're going to have, so we can try to solve that problem as two Chairs this year. I'm just talking about the Charter changes. But if this board definitely wants another meeting with Finance, I think I would have no problem with that, and I don't think the Chair of the Finance Committee would have trouble with another meeting with us, if we were looking for another joint meeting. Would you have a problem with that, Maury?
No.
You have to.
Yeah.
I mean, you absolutely must have a meeting, because we have no idea what they've been talking about.
Okay.
And if they have valid concerns, I mean, if it's important enough to give them the budget the same time that we get it, instead of thus giving them an approved budget, then to me, they have to have, there's some reason over there that they think they want to see this before it's approved. And we have to allow for that process to nurture, and I think it's going to, it's going to take at least a full meeting.
So are we operating on the presumption that we are going to accept these Charter changes?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think until we've got some resolution, because we need, we're talking about scheduling.
Well, we could also, regards to the Charter changes, if you want to see how it works out when we try to do it on our own, you can always put this on the Fall Town meeting. You don't need to do the Springtown.
That's what I was going to suggest. I mean, there's nothing that prohibits us from using this process now. Like I said, the budget is a public document when it's released, and Finance, you know, we can welcome the Finance Committee to come and talk to us. Let's work through it and see how it works with timing. Instead, try and rush through this Charter change, just do the process this year, and if it works really well, we can tweak it and put it, put the Charter changes on the Fall Town meeting.
Okay.
I think that's, to me, it's a-
See, the other thing you need to do is look at the bylaws, because the bylaws are not congruent with this schedule, because the bylaws actually state that the town manager have it till March 12th, it's 60 days before the annual town meeting. That's when, that's when the town manager must submit the budget. So all those need to be kind of going in the same direction.
So we need to also-
Yeah.
-go back to the bylaws.
Because I think we had that last year, didn't we?
I would say it-
I think we had six hours to look at the budget.
I don't believe that to be true.
Oh, that's right, it's likely four.
No, I don't believe that to be true either, Richard.
Okay, so we won't do the Finance Committee section for this year, but we will deal with that in the Fall Town meeting, or the next Chair will. Now, what about capital planning? Do you have any questions for Attorney Martel regarding the changes on capital planning that are recommended?
There had been a lot of talk, I guess, combined in those two committees?
There was.
Yeah.
And we decided to keep them separate.
Okay. Was there, was there any compelling reason for people wanting to combine them? Were you able to assert that?
Maybe it would be more streamlined to only have one committee instead of two. We considered that and decided to-
Kind of totally different functions, though. I'm glad, I guess I'm glad to see them kept separate, because it seemed like they're advisor to each other, but-
We felt good about having two committees.
Yeah, okay.
All right, no questions on the capital planning?
I think you clarified a lot, clarified a lot of what's going on.
There was just a, just a sort of a, a very brief reference to the Capital Planning Committee in the back of the Charter, and we moved it forward so that there's a new section that just deals with the Capital Planning Committee and its composition, and what it does.
Okay. All right, if there's no questions on the capital planning, how about Town Building Committee? It's a brand-new section. The Building Committee was established by this board, and now we're going to put it as an actual part of the Charter, which we're not doing to a lot of committees, but we felt this was an important one. Any questions in regards to the Building Committee?
Yeah, the only question I got is, you're saying the vertical construction?
I mean, those, those words aren't in the Charter.
Right.
They're in quotes to simply say that the, that the building, you're talking now about the Building Committee. The Building Committee, we wanted to make sure, make it clear that the Building Committee isn't going to get into non-building capital work. So that was the idea.
Okay, the Building Committee itself.
All right. Any other questions? Because what I'm going to do is I'm going to send these to Capital Planning, Town Building Committee, if they want to come back with comments before we vote.
Yeah, I'm just going back to some analysis and notes I took back when this was first submitted. My concern about the Building Committee is whether or not the Standing Committee should be specified in the Charter, or just as a Standing Committee. And I'm not questioning the need for this, the Building Committee, and right now they're pretty active. But I can envision a period of time where we've got a Charter-required Building Committee, and, you know, we have a tough time getting people to staff it, or to serve on the committee, and a tough time giving them things to do. I think, you know, my comment was how to properly define and sufficiently specify the responsibilities of the Town Building Committee, to make their work impactful in a time where there's no new construction being managed. And that's something that's missing from the definition of the Building Committee.
Well, the Building, the Town Building Committee, the new section 2-12, which carries over your mandate when you approve the concept of the Building Committee, future needs for town buildings, comment on capital projects related to town buildings, evaluate the use of buildings on current, use of current space, and those sorts. It's more than, it will have a function even after your new buildings are all up.
But you, you were tending to discredit them away from the existing buildings.
Well, I believe, I don't, I don't have it here, but I think the functions of the Town Building Committee are, as you specified when you created the Town Building Committee by a vote of the Select Board in 2017.
Right. Well, you just read that, didn't you, Dave?
I'm reading it from the Charter. I don't, I don't think I have a copy of what your vote was.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he's right. We were talking, I think, right now the Building Committee's auditing buildings, talking about uses of the buildings. So I think when we look at this section on the Building Committee, we have to pull out, and I'll make sure everyone has a copy of our original mission statement for them.
Marie, just one other thing, that, the, one of the definite, I think the definition in the Charter says, or in our charge and in the proposal is, an Advisory Design Review Committee? And they're acting way beyond that level as an Advisory Design Review Committee. I mean, they're, you know, looking at, approving change, you know, they've got a lot of other authorities, and I'm just not sure that those authorities, if we're putting this in the Charter, are built in there. And I guess my problem is, I'm trying to figure out where in this document it is, because I guess what we were given, it doesn't include Section 211.
No, it doesn't.
But I, but I'd actually pulled up the Section 211 that-
211 or 212?
Section 212.
212, I'm sorry, 212.
So I will make sure everyone has that actual, one, the original one that we all voted on. Because I think, I think it was Richard, when you say jurisdiction over vertical construction projects, and not other capital improvement, that can be contradictory to our request for them to audit and make recommendations of future projects.
That's what I was referring to, there seems to be a, two statements kind of fighting each other.
Yeah, I think they are.
I mean, Marie, I think what I pulled out of 212 says, is 212b, "The function and duties of the Town Building Committee shall be to advise the town manager and the Select Board on the future needs for town buildings, to review and comment on capital projects related to town buildings, including schools. In addition, the committee shall serve as an Advisory Design Review Committee and review new construction and/or renovations of the town buildings." If, you know, to me, that's, falls somewhat short of what they're being asked to do right now. That's my only point, is if we're putting it in the Charter, I would think we'd want to try to include what they're, you know, the way they're functioning today, not just the way they're going to function in a time of no significant construction.
Well, I'll ask for a draft on what the Building Committee feels would reflect what they actually are doing now, from what we originally voted on, and we'll bring that to the March 16th meeting.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Dave, on your research, did you find any other towns that have this committee in their Charter?
That's not something that I recall getting into. We may have, but I don't recall that.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I hear Mark's part, too, there's validity in that part also, that it's not a, it's not recognized under MGLs to be a mandatory requirement of a town to have this in their Charter, correct? So it's just one of the, something that we've kind of brought up.
To make sure it's still there. We think it's an important committee.
Yeah, well, it's something that we could make Charter modifications in the future going by, I mean, if we changed the thrust on it. We have more freedom to change the committee without it being in the Charter than we do in the Charter. And I think that's what maybe Mark was talking to. This thing is still maturing as far as the direction, so, you know, I wonder if we're better off to leave it off for a year and just work with it. I can't see the compelling reason to have it in the Charter. What is the backdrop on that?
We just saw that it, felt that it was an important enough committee, that it deserved some stature in the Charter.
Okay. So that was the reason?
Comes down to that, yes.
Okay.
All right, so we will try to get a rewrite recommendation on the Building Committee, and then we can decide whether we'll table it for the fall or not.
Marie, if I could, I just wanted, because I finally dug up my notes, I just wanted to go back quickly to the Capital Planning Committee, just read a comment that, this is my comments, not anybody else's, but, you know, I was thinking that we should modify the proposed 2-11 section that Attorney Martel's committee put up. It describes the responsibilities of the CPC, but what it doesn't do, and where we've fallen short of, you know, is a timeframe. And, and so, you know, a timeframe which the capital plan should be committed, submitted to the Select Board, which is, you know, in terms of whether months prior to the town meeting, or whatever it is. And even if we did something as, you know, obscure, or as minimal as, not less than six months, or not less than whatever submitting things to the, you know, because otherwise, we've run into timeframes, and I think it is an important group, but I think trying to give them a timeframe, you know, I mean, and it doesn't, doesn't have to be six, whatever it is, but, you know, we've in fact had it, the timing on that thing fall down.
Now, you said you're not going to be here on the 16th?
I'm not, right.
So maybe we should push this off until you can be there, because I'd like you to put your comments into the-
Well, I'll be glad to send-
Send the comments out.
In fact, I did this once before, but I can send these out again. But, I mean, for, you know, I endorse and accept all the other recommendations that the Charter Review Committee made about capital planning. I thought they were good, but I thought it lacked this, any timing specificity, that was my own comment.
Or you can give us your recommended changes, and we can discuss and vote.
Well, Section 7-7 of the, as the Charter presently exists, is captioned "Capital Improvement Program," and that's when the capital improvement, the Charter, the Capital Improvement Committee prepares the Capital Improvement Plan, which is annually submitted to the Select Board. So they do have an annual requirement.
He wants to have actual dates and times.
I just think that they've got, I mean, they've gotten it as late as mid-January kind of thing, and, you know, now maybe that's not going to happen in the future, but that's really, I mean, when I was on capital planning, I think with Richard, we were getting them in October, which really stresses the town having to come up with a capital program, you know, 18 months before you're going to do anything about it. But on the other hand, they gave them time to do a thorough check. When they got them in January, they were doing the quick once-over, and we got a lot of, you know, not as thoroughly reviewed analyses.
Richard?
Yeah, the, I don't know if it needs to be in the Charter, because it's in the financial policies. The deadlines are in the financial policies that we approve every year. I don't think we've got any other time requirements in the Charter.
Is capital-
For submission of the capital improvement plan.
Yeah, for all submission, and also the plan going to the committee, and-
I'm not sure if there is dates sitting there. I mean, there is dates that we've followed that we have, I mean, this year we had it in their hands, the first part of December, we made that commitment. But I don't know if those are in stone or not.
But I think that's where, I thought it was there, and if not, that's where it needs to be.
And I'm fine, if it goes into, into the budget calendar rather than in the Charter, that's okay. I just think we just need to give ourselves a deadline and give them a deadline, too.
Yeah, you might opt to bring it out in June. We don't know, I mean, you-
Well, we always say we should have two phases of capital planning anyway.
Yeah, two phases of capital.
One for the spring, one for the fall.
This year, I think we-
So we could adopt, we can adopt all those capital plans. You don't have any opposition if we take care of the schedule?
No, 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 right, it's the schedule.
That can be adopted.
Right.
And the audit, any questions for Dave regarding the Audit Committee, that they're, they may decide to make no changes? Or do you just want to review the report which you didn't get from the minority, and then make our decisions on the 16th? Any questions for Attorney Martel?
Divert to the 16th. Give us some time. He needs a chance to read it up. I need to revisit it, too, to be fair.
And we'll, we'll discuss it, because we're, like, super late on getting our goals going.
Let me just point out that there still are about 10 non-financial proposed revisions to the Charter that haven't been brought before the town meeting. We took care of a bunch of them last May.
We're trying to take bites at a time, yeah. But you want to send those to us to make sure that Lynn has those?
To point out the ones that haven't been addressed?
Right, if you could get that to her, and then it'll be on the schedule.
Dave, just a lifetime employment day, you know?
The board did a slew of changes for the town manager at a January meeting.
Oh, all right, well, then maybe, maybe some of those are in the pipeline, then.
It's possible, and School Committee is reviewing the school-related ones.
Okay.
So let her know what are still left there.
Why don't I just give you the list, and some of them you may already have addressed.
Sure. Okay, sounds good. Pete, did you want to say one last thing? Because we're not going to discuss audit now.
No, no, I, Building Committee, if the word "vertical" comes out, the, this group could be oversight for Wolf Swamp Fields. And I've sat in on a number of their meetings, I think their skill set is superior to Parks and Recs for overseeing the construction bidding process at Wolf Swamp Field.
Brew you a bouquet. Okay, thank you very much for coming in. Oh, Maury, did you want to say something?
Yes.
I just had one comment about the, the changes proposed to the Finance Committee in the Charter. The, the issue that we have is, as you've raised, as some of the members of this committee, as the, of the board have raised, is with the Finance Committee having set forth a goal with respect to the levy ceiling, if we get the budget in not enough time to determine what the recommendation is going to be, before it can go to the printer, and before you have an opportunity to know what our recommendation is in the process of you creating the budget, then we end up with the situation, I think somewhere here said, Mark maybe said was problematic, and what you said you wanted to avoid, which is where you're given our recommendation by surprise on the floor of town meeting. It is important for us, it's not just the budget, but the warrant itself, but the budget the budget specifically, that the finance committees, especially with respect to that policy, have an opportunity to let the select board know in advance whether this is meeting the policy and therefore, or the, our recommendation, and therefore, we're going to be able to get behind and recommend this, and put that in the warrant so that we go into town meeting with a united front on the budget proposal. Or, if we're going to be in a situation where we get the budget, we have no idea whether it's going to meet the recommendation or not, and then we either have to make a recommendation on the floor by surprise, or we vote not to recommend the budget, and you folks don't find out until you get the warrant in your hands and see not recommended, and then you don't know why, because there was no opportunity to, there was no opportunity between then and when you get it.
Right.
So that's, so that is the issue.
Okay, so, well, we're going, let's, I'm afraid we're, go ahead, Mark, but then we got to get going.
But Maury, the issue is that, that, two things. I mean, most people look at the one line underneath the budget that says "recommended by the finance committee," or hopefully it doesn't say "not recommended." What they don't do is, there's supposed to be a write-up of multiple paragraphs inside the warrant document, the whole piece of paper, you know, the whole thing we said, that explains from the finance committee why and how and what. And so the details are, are not in the one-line sentence, and, and so, you know, if, for example, you know, the finance committee who's adamant of saying 1.75% increase in, in taxing, and for some reason, to balance the budget, we go to 1.85, and it causes the finance committee to say, "We can't recommend this on town meeting floor." Yeah, we want to know about that going into it. We want to know that a consequence to select board of you going to 1.85 is going to be, we won't recommend it on town floor.
I think, I think that's why we're going to have another meeting and work our way through it.
But more importantly, it can't just say, "We voted not recommended by the finance committee." The write-up needs to say why you're not recommending it, and that's, that's the board part of it.
We'll discuss that when we have our joint meeting after the budget, and you start telling us what your comments are, okay?
But they need the time to be able, they need the time to be able to write something up and not stand up at town meeting floor and give them a one-line sentence, or even, you know, and if you go back several years, you know, I remember Judd Peskin used to write up multiple paragraphs about that, and I don't know. Yeah, I'm writing in town, right, Paul?
Well, there's a finance committee report that is, I believe it's almost page one of the warrant. I think for some reason, last year was, it was omitted, I don't know if it was last year or the year before. And Maury wasn't chair, but all the other years, they had provided a report on such.
All right, thank you very much. Well, you and I will plan the meeting, so we'll get the schedule going. Thank you very much, Attorney Martell.
Thanks.
We'll let you know as we pass things, or change things. Thank you. And so now, we're ready for our joint meeting. Thank you, you want to come on up? We're going to discuss financial goals. We've invited the finance committee, it's a joint meeting. I don't know, do you have to open your meeting, too?
Yes.
Yeah. Do you want to bring a chair up here next to me, Maury, so we can both see the room?
You've not been to Asia lately. You haven't been to Asia lately.
No, I'm going to get close to you.
Caught between them.
How you doing?
This was something that we had before, and...
Yeah, I have.
Okay. Actually, you sit here, I just moved all my stuff over here.
He's got, he's got plenty of them.
Does everyone have, over there? All right, I'll pass this down here. Did you get them down here?
I just wrote something up that we could start working on.
Oh, you did, okay. Yeah, I was trying to write something up that we would have at 30,000 feet, and we start working on, on financial goals for the town. And I sent this out to everyone, no one sent me comments or things back on how they wanted to change it. So I guess we'll just go line by line, and maybe through that, we'll start breaking down where we're missing things.
Maury, can I suggest you just read the thing through once to the people who may be watching this at home?
All right, that's a good idea. All right, so it's, "Select Board Goals: Finance. Provide a high level of services to all residents while maintaining a tax and fee schedule that is sustainable to all residents. Preserve and protect our financial assets. Develop and implement plans and policies to manage unfunded liabilities of pension, retiree health benefits, and asset management. Develop and implement plan to address tax ceiling crisis. Monitor and manage debt levels. Monitor and manage property values. Develop and implement plan to pay for increases in emergency management costs due to climate change. Analyze any new programs or assets for their long-term costs and budgetary requirements. Cooperatively develop an annual budget that supports long-term goals while addressing current problems." I guess what I'll first ask is, what did I not list that everyone thinks is missing from there?
Maury, I mean, don't take this the wrong way, but that's, that's a compliment.
This was a rough draft.
This is motherhood and apple pie, and I can't imagine, any, you know, you take the first three or four sentences, that's our jobs, you know, as the finance committee, as the select board, to high level of services, maintain tax and fee schedules sustainable, preserve, I mean, all, you know, the, the issues, one of the issues I do have is monitor and manage property values. I'm not sure we have the ability to do that, much less the authority to, to manage property values, you know, because it's more or less a free market. I'm a little concerned about that one. But, you know, but, you know, I, I think the more the meat of it is development and implement a plan to pay for increasing emergency management costs, and analyze new program assets for their budgetary requirements. I mean, those are the meat of directives to our committees, our boards, to, to do stuff. The other stuff is, if we didn't do it, we should be run out of town.
Well, I think what we're first looking is the 30,000-foot level. What are we supposed to be doing? I thought we should memorialize that, so that we could go down and see what we're forgetting. Then we could start putting the meat on the bones, on what we're going to do in regards to the unfunded liabilities, what we're going to do with the tax ceiling issue. So I, I think this was just like a beginning 30,000 feet. So Mark had a problem with the property values thing. My first question is, what did we miss? Was there something else we should be doing when we talk about managing the finances in town? Did I forget something? Of course, this was like at 4:00 AM. And our, you know, residential writer, don't hesitate to wordsmith, because I'm not known for my writing.
Well, I have two comments, Maury. One is, when Mark was talking about the notion of managing property values, I don't know if, if folks think it makes sense to talk about protecting property values, or increasing property, I mean, is that, is that like increasing property values, or protecting the property value of the town? Is that something that we feel like we, that folks shouldn't, or the select board, or shouldn't be invested in doing, or is it, I, because I understand the discomfort with the term "manage," but, but increasing or, or protecting certainly sounds like something that we would want to do.
I think that some of the programs we did do, Mark, is when we did the distressed properties. One of the reasons we passed that was because that was really bringing down people's values, having a house that wasn't cared for. I know that the previous town manager actually sat down with a real estate agent, saying, "How can we improve values?" We do monitor, because every year we get a report from the assessors and Paul where we're standing. I think another project to protect is foundations, crumbling foundation issue. To protect our values, we need to start encouraging these programs to come out of Beacon Hill. So manage might not be the right term. Should we say protect and, or support?
Support policies that protect property values may be a better way.
Okay. Monitor property values and support policies, what did you say?
Support policies that, that protect property values.
Anything about managing the finances that we don't have here?
Well, I don't know how specific you want to make the, how specific, I mean, you talked about 30,000 feet, I don't know how specific you want to make this, but in the past, there's been discussion, and this may be more the purview of the Tax Ceiling Task Force, but of some shared expenses between towns, and cooperative, I guess, public works, or cooperative emergency management, things like, I don't, I don't know if that's, if you want to get that specifically.
Maury, those are tactics, and I think we should be at strategy level. My opinion is one, one level up. But Maury, one thing that's not in there is what I call quality of life, or, you know, the character of the town, or however, you know, why people move to Long Meadow, whatever, whatever that is. It's, you know, residential community with local schools, with whatever, whatever, you know, you ask 100 people, you might get 100 different answers, but whatever they say, that's why I moved to Long Meadow, that, that's, those are some of the reasons we want to, we want to protect.
Now, in regards to Maury's comment, we could put in here something about managing the operating budget, or strategizing ways of decreasing or controlling the operating budget. In regards to you, we could talk, instead of high level of services, we could say to support our quality of life, support the best, so both of those ideas are definitely worth putting in. The question is, do you want to put it in here, or do you want to put it in when we start breaking down the individual plans? I mean, if we do have a general goal, if, of not just, that is sustainable, I call it a sustainable, we could call it that emphasizes regionalization, we could definitely put that as a overstretching goal. Do you want to put that in? A sustainable to all, high level of services, now you said...
You can't put in things that will end up being mutually exclusive, or could end up being mutually exclusive, because you can't conflict within the same document.
Well, and we are in some ways, we say high level of services, that is sustainable. We could say affordable, instead of sustainable, we could say affordable to all residents.
Well, no, because what's affordable to you isn't affordable to me, I mean, it's not affordable, but sustainable means I can do this, and I can continue to do it. That's, sustainable is a lot different, Maury, than affordable, because I, I don't think we want to get there.
So do we want to talk about quality of life? As, as you're saying, quality of life for you is different from quality of life from someone who's got toddlers, so...
You're, you're right, but it, but their quality of life, and what moved them to come to Long Meadow is what we want to protect, just like we want to protect my quality of life, and what moved me to come to Long Meadow, and that's why, in theory, we represent the people who live in town.
All right, so I'm going to put those two ideas, regionalization and quality of life.
And the other, the other thing is, I want to just talk again about the character of town. We hear it a lot, but, you know, we don't want to end up saying, "Well, the best way to do this is turn Route 5 into a four-lane highway and put, and put commercial buildings on either side of it," because that'll solve all of our, of our tax problems and our financial problems, but that's not in keeping with the character of the town. And, and, you know, I just think that's a, something we should keep in mind.
Okay, so, character of the town.
Why don't you dig that one?
What, the, the four-lane highway?
Yeah, well, that's always been the argument about Converse Street and Long Meadow Street, do we, do we go ahead and do that, and, or are we going to expand our tax base?
I have one, this is, I, I don't know if this is financial, but the term "character of the town," I, I think what we're talking about more is the aesthetic of the town than, more or less the char, when I think about character of a town, that, to me, that leans heavy into what kind of people you want in your town. Whereas what we're really talking about is, we, we want to protect the beauty of the town, the, the build, the age of buildings, our old buildings, that's the kind of thing we're talking, we don't want, like you said, we don't want Route 5 in Long Meadow to look like it does when you get off the exit ramp. We don't want the whole highway to look like that, but that's, that doesn't really, I mean, certainly the, the historic character of the town, certainly. But, but I, I do think it is, it does deal more with the aesthetics and the beauty of the town than the...
We could put that right after protect, preserve and protect our financial assets, protecting the beautiful histor, or historic beauty of Long Meadow. Richard?
Yeah, I looked at your list here, I, I may have a minority opinion, but I'll, I'll put it out. You've got goals and tasks all smashed together. I mean, a lot of these are action items, they're not a goal, they're an action item in support of something, you know, like provide the high level service to all residents while maintaining it tax-free and blah, blah, blah. That is a major overarching goal. That's not a task, that's a goal, that's what you said, you're going to maintain, and then under that, a lot of these other things are in support of that, and they're, they're actually a task that supports that goal.
So anytime we go for development and all those other things, you're saying these are tasks that go under?
If, if it's an action item, it's usually a task.
Okay.
Where if it's a goal, you know, if the, if the goal is like your, you had something down here on the, your fire department lawn, and, you know, like, what was it here, development and pay for emergency management costs due to climate change, that you're developing and implementing a plan to pay for increases, so that's, you know, it's in response to something, but what's, what was the goal that you wanted? Did it come back up to provide the high level service to all residents? Could very well have been up, that's the anchor goal, and these become tasks, and under that.
Okay. All right, so we'll break from development on, we'll be broken down into the tasks. First will be the goal, and that's, that's a task to implement.
And I'd like to ask town manager, because you guys were doing, at a mayoral form of government, were you doing the goals and tasks differently up there?
Yes, but I guess this leads to my question, where does this live? Where, is this part of your...
In our souls.
Well, then it's handed to you. So there's the, the general financial goal, and then, like you said, tasks, and then from tasks, once we have the plans, then what are we hoping to achieve this year? So let's take an example, is, if we're going to talk about the next one, task one, develop and implement plans and policies to manage unfunded liabilities of pension, retirement health, and then we would decide what we could do this year, what would be, what would the task that we would try to accomplish this year in regards to retirement health plans, once we've figured out a laundry list of what we can do.
I see.
Now, how else would you recommend we do financial goals?
So you do these every year, this goal set?
Now, we've done, we, what we did in the past is, we've done, voted on tasks that we wanted the town manager to do. I was hoping that we would set something up, that we would start saying, "These are our goals," and that's why I thought, figure out a way to manage our unfunded liability, Richard's saying it's not a goal, it's a task.
Yeah, actually, everything, after this, provide high level service to all residents while maintaining, that is the ma, that's the big one. I mean, every, almost everything you've got can fall under that. You may not want it to, but it can, because all of these things support that, because that, that's all that comes to, the tax and the fee schedule is everything that we deal with.
Maury, if we were, if we were a for-profit organization, or different, from municipal organization, we'd have started with a, with a vision statement and a mission statement, and then gone down into, into these levels of individual segment goals, like financial goals, or whatever it is, and, and because of that, you know, I'm trying to put what I'll call vision statement type things into this financial goal, and in fact, probably none of that belongs here. You know, the financial goals ought to be, you know, what they say, measurable, sustainable, achievable, timely, you know, all that, whatever the SMART, you know, acronym is for, for goals. And, and we don't have those for goals, and that's, so, either we're writing a mission statement, which is at 30,000 feet, or we're writing goals which have to be measurable, timely, and achievable goals, and in general, because we're in government and things work slowly, they ought to be two to three years at the most, and probably two to three years at the least, you know, and things that we're not going to get... and probably two to three years at the least, you know, and things that we're not going to get done in six months.
So, if you take the first line, though, it is a vision statement. And then, if we break the others, we could start finding measurable goals.
Let me give you a quick one, and maybe you'll relate into it better. All ground, all green space in the town of Long Meadow shall be kept litter-free at all times.
Okay.
That is a goal, that's a big lofty one. Then, and under that, you got all of the schedules and what is required to make that thing a reality, and that's where all the meat, that's where the real work, that's where the rubber hits the road. But the goal is, it's lofty, it's up here, and you've said, we don't care. In other words, I don't care how you're going to do it, I just told you I want the ground, all green areas in the state, in the town of Long Meadow, we kept litter-free at all times.
Okay, so, all right, so what financial goals would you list?
I'll tell you what I'd list, I'd list, you know, develop a long-term affordable and sustainable, OPEB policy, develop a long-term sustainable pension payment system, develop a long-term and sustainable other benefits, which, because those are the three cost, you know, medical benefits, those are the three costs that are, that are going to be the success or not success.
Okay, I don't know what the third one is.
You could even group them closer, too.
So, okay, if you take the...
There's pensions, there's OPEB, and there's current medical benefits. You know, those, you know, those are the costs that are raising, rising at seven, eight percent a year.
So, you're talking about managing current health?
It's not managing, it's developing a plan to bring them under control. And, and I'm going to go off, off on a tangent, but let's say we take the pension.
Well, hold it, no, 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 okay, so the very next line is developing implement pans for unfunded liabilities of pension, OPEB, and you're saying you want to add healthcare insurance, okay? And you, we're not going to do asset management, so let's start with those three.
That's a financial goal.
Okay, so those are three goals, he said they're tasks, they're not goals, Richard just said.
You can usually reward them to get it to where you want it, if you want to be sterile. It really doesn't matter, as long as we want to work with them.
Okay, so, we've got the first three, that's, uh, OPEB pension and manage our healthcare costs. All right, so now, as Lynn says, where is this going to live? So, that's the very next line.
Yeah, you had develop for OPEB, and that, that's a lofty goal, that's a big one.
Okay, so what is the task, though, that's going to be set up for us this year to do when it comes to OPEB?
So, we've already accepted that as a, as a goal?
Well, even if we have, she was just saying.
So, so, so the task for OPEB could be to develop three different methods that will fund it, or methods to fund it in three years, ten years, and twenty years. And, and then, we end up, you know, if you're deciding, okay, we're going to fund it in ten years, then here's the ways you fund it in ten years, or if you have a system, here's, if you want to fund it in three years, here's the ways to do it, if you want to fund it in five years, here's, you want to fund it in ten years or twenty years. So, you come up with those, if you will, a matrix of opportunities or ways to do it, and then we say, that's the one we're going to do, we're going to pursue that process, and in fifteen years, we're going to have our OPEB fully funded.
So, the task was?
The task, and then we develop tasks around it, which are, whatever it takes to fund OPEB, we've decided we're going to do that in fifteen years, if that's what we agree.
So, is our goal to ask Lynn to develop a plan, and that is the task this year?
No, to develop options. She develops the options, and we select one, and then from those options, we, we develop the detailed plan. Don't get detailed in a work plan if we haven't agreed on the, on the goal yet.
And, and our global goal could be that we want the town manager to present us with a strategic plan for OPEB. And under that, like Mark said, we can have a ten-year plan, fifteen-year plan, twenty-year plan, and then they fill out all the details, and it becomes a briefing document, and then, which, but that's the goal of this year, is to develop the plan.
And I fully expect Lynn would come back and say, we're not going to do it in five years, it doesn't work, and I'm not even going to put one on the table, because a five-year plan is a waste of time.
She can put the figures on, she can put the figures on real quick.
Right, right.
Paul can, Paul's good at dreaming up figures.
But I mean, if, if, if addressing OPEB is an important financial goal to us, and I think it is, then we need somebody to come up with options, and then we say, that's what we're going to work on. Just like, this year, we're going to work on streetlights, or we're going to work on, you know, we're going to work in, a year from now, we're going to have the, have a plan in place that solves OPEB in eight years or ten years.
Okay, so, are, so the goal for the OPEB line is basically to ask her to come up with a plan?
No, the goal is fully fund OPEB. How do you get to the, you know, as a town, we want to fully fund OPEB.
You're the one who's always told me, you don't want to fully fund OPEB. You've been fighting with me, then, why aren't you saying?
Marie, I really don't, but that, but that could be a goal.
And when, you know, we're not, that's not something that I think, as a town, we want to do. We don't want to put our resources to that, so why are we creating the goal?
Then, if we, then, then take OPEB off the list. The only reason I'm doing it is because we're putting a percentage of our money in there. Maybe the issue is pension, because it's going up at eight percent, and that we do want to bring under control. I, we can't continue to pay an eight percent increase every year.
Lynn, help us here, this is our problem when it comes to goal setting.
Right, so, could you, could you start with just the main paragraph and keep the first two sentences, except on that second sentence, strike financial, financial, and just say assets. Or it could say, preserve, protect, and maintain our assets.
Okay.
And then, um, strike the rest, all the way to, sorry, um, all the way to, uh, analyze, and keep those last two sentences.
Okay.
And then, under that, identify the tasks.
Okay, all right, and, you know, instead of saying we want over, Maury?
We're taking the, the OPEB, um, number-one item out.
No, 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 we're just throwing stuff out.
Well, I, well, one I would like to throw, I like Mark's language, a long-term, sustainable, uh, plan for our annual tax increases. Because that's one of the things that's been the Finance Committee's focus, is to, I don't think, I mean, we have our, the chart that we, um, that Mr. Pasterzic has helped us develop, but, uh, the spreadsheet, rather, but, um, I would like to see the Select Board adopt as some sort of long-term, sustainable policy with respect to the tax increases, so that we are, so that it's a policy on, um, from the perspective of the elected, um, Select Board, not to run afoul of the levy limit.
So, you want to decrease the taxes, not, was, was for the levy limit?
So...
So, that's part of the reason you want to control the levy limit, is using that?
Well, as I understand it, it, the, those two issues are related, but they're not necessarily linked. It is not that we, we cannot avoid the levy limit, but, without refraining from increasing taxes, that we can increase taxes, but we can only increase taxes a certain amount. And, right now, um, the, the Finance Committee is making the recommendation not to increase it more than a certain amount, and, and the Select Board has been, um, more or less observing a policy or pursuing a policy of not increasing it a certain amount. But we don't, but I don't know that we have it in anywhere in the, what you're describing as a, as a policy or an official goal, that this is what we are trying to do, not to...
You have to be somewhat cautious, because you have an overriding policy of two and a half percent. That, that's the state law.
Sure.
So, there's the, the policy up there, and, and the other one, we totally agree with everything you're saying, but it varies every year. And, you know, we, for the last, what, four years on the board, we have been trying to push back, and push back even more on, on the tax rate. It's not slowing us down too much, because the problem is much bigger than just that tax rate, as you well know. It's, it's the fact is, we don't have new construction, we don't have new revenue coming to town. And that is our real problem, it's not what we're charged on taxes, we just don't have the luxury of growth. We basically have stopped growing in this community in the late nineties, and there's just sporadic little pieces of growth. And would it even go that late, Paul, it was what, mid-seventies, mid-eighties, when we stopped really growing?
Um, I think the last biggest one was, was Long Meadow. And other than that, I mean, during my tenure, I don't recall anything major.
Oh, we've got the White Road.
So, your, your overall, the overall thing, instead of, instead of just saying, instead of zeroing in on the tax rate, saying one point seven five, is to get the goal even up higher, higher than that, and that that becomes some of the annual tasks it would plug in to try to meet this global objective. You see what I mean? In other words, take, take the conversation just one click higher, instead of actually getting into the nuts and bolts of it, get up into the theory part of it. You know, like economic, or whatever, dynamic economic use of our, uh, uh, growth every year, something to effect of a larger statement, and then, under that, you can say, okay, we're going to make a consideration every single year, you're going to make a recommendation on what part of the levy to use.
Well, so, let's take the levy, because this seems to be an important issue for finance, and we'll go down to develop an implement pan to address tax ceiling crisis, because that's the main reason.
Right, that's the global, correct.
That you're doing.
Yeah, that's the big one.
It's not to keep our taxes low, but it's that. So, let's talk about some of the things we've done so far, stormwater, to, to take away the tax ceiling. Uh, we've been keeping a, um, under the levy limit, uh, was one of our goals, and that's what you've been pushing. Stormwater utility, uh, expand the tax base. What else did we say we were going to do?
You're okay to talk again, Trish?
Oh, yeah, we, uh, well, we, what do you call it, we decreased the tax, but we don't, one of the things we could do is a fee for garbage. We could do a fee for garbage.
But you're in a task, right?
Yeah, we're in a task, because tax rate is a task under, it's part of a plan.
Those are reactive and not proactive.
No, those are proactive, if we decide to go with a garbage fee. Stormwater utility took some of the pressure off of the property tax.
Fine, but that, that's, but the fundamental issue is that, that, you know, we can only ra, we're going to hit the tax ceiling, but we can only raise our taxes by a certain amount, and, and we've got, I'm going to throw out a goofy number here, seventy-five percent of our, of our costs are all related to people, and that's going up at two and a half percent, except for the part of it that's going up by eight percent. So, I mean, you know, rather than say, we'll just take stuff out of the tax, the tax bill, you know, make things fee-based instead of tax-based, that, that's not solving the problem. Solving the problem is, is eliminating the costs or generating additional revenue. You know, I mean, we can pull all kinds of things out of the tax base, but even that's, you know, once we take out the, the trash, and once we take out the stormwater, we're going to start a, a, a school, school zone, and people are going to have to pay for schools, we're going to start, got to pay for police and fire, we can't do that.
So, you're talking about additional revenue, decrease operating costs.
It's not just...
So, how are you going to do those, if those are on the list? Because we've brought that up in the tax ceiling task force.
If I'm being challenged here, fine, if we're going to, additional revenue, we go out, we put in a, a town Wi-Fi system and, and that generates income, because people are going to subscribe to Wi-Fi.
Now, we got...
We've had our cable advisory committee...
Five, what is it, what is this, five?
Five G?
Five G?
So, but our cable advisory committee said they're, they'd be thrilled to go out and try to do that on, on the town's behalf.
But people are disconnecting from the cable, Mark.
They're not connecting from internet, they're connecting from cable TV.
Yeah, but the internet's coming in like a lot of different ways now.
All I know is, a lot of towns have gotten in trouble now, because they tried to do the Wi-Fi, and now the costs and everything are, are shooting. So, we can list that as a possibility.
Kill, like, you know, we, we can go out and put in solar fields that we, that's rental income for the town.
Too many, but you can't get too many things.
There's potential sources of rev, the issue, Marie, isn't...
Well, we have to discuss what all the tasks are, before we decide which tasks we're going to go for.
Yeah, but you don't want to get so big, we can't get a decision made. Uh, you going to be chair for another couple of years?
Oh, no, I got four months. I'm trying to get a set of goals for Lynn that are measurable, and I wanted to get something that we all agree on, and then we go down. That we charge, I decided we would just break it down into pieces and do financing first.
What was left over? What was left over that wasn't accomplished?
I think Stephen got almost all of it done that was on there, we just had a few tasks for him. We're now back to starting over again.
Marie, I, I still keep hitting, uh, pensions are going up at eight percent, and we can fundamentally do something about it. We have some authority on pensions, you know, whether, whether it's how we invest our money or what...
But we're on tax ceiling now, so what are we going to do with tax ceiling? You just said...
Stop, stop, or those costs going up eight percent is going to do a whole lot toward slowing how fast we get to the tax ceiling.
Okay, so now we're spinning out the tax ceiling goal, then we're going to pension goal.
The Finance Committee's goal of one point seven five percent.
Are we doing anything towards the tax ceiling, do we have, for this upcoming, next budget year? Is there any goal we're going to give her on tax ceiling? Are we going to try to, um, go for the legislation? Are we going to try to, uh, have a hiring freeze? Are, are we going to try to, uh, look for additional revenue? What are we going to try to do? Fire district, we could do a fire district. A fire district would probably pull two thousand dollars out of the, uh, tax base, and then, all of the other nonprofits would have to pay towards a fire district. And we expand it like we did with the stormwater utility. So, I want to know what are the next few steps we'll do in this, and make it a goal for Lynn this year. Because I'm trying to figure out how to goal-set for finances.
Are these calendar year or fiscal?
Fiscal.
Yeah, Wendy, Wendy, I'm a little confused, you're saying that you, is this the second goals that you're trying to put in this year?
We don't have any goals.
What about, what about, this is way, way, way into the year, what about the goals we were here last year?
We never set goals this year.
But it doesn't, that doesn't mean we're not doing anything.
Under the other chair.
I mean, Marie, I, I, you know, we're working on, and Lynn's working hard on, on buying and installing LED streetlights. It's going to save us two hundred fifty or three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. That's a substantial achievement for this town, especially given now that I know what it really takes to do it, you know? And, and to say that we didn't do anything this year would be...
I didn't say we didn't do anything.
No, but we did say we didn't have a goal.
We didn't set goals.
I said, that was not listed on the goal sheet, Mark, that's what I'm saying, where's the goals from last year? Do you have them, Lynn? Did Tom ever make them up? Did Tom make the goals up last year as the chair?
No, I was the chair.
Were you the chair, did you make them up last year?
No, because we, we have things we're still working on.
Now, we got that down, that when we...
So, I'm trying to figure out a new way of setting goals, because we've been really bad at it for some weeks, Maury.
Well, some of us have been.
In terms of goals, again, I, I would like to see the Select Board officially adopt as a goal the Finance Committee's recommendation of keeping the tax ceiling perpetually ten years away, until such time as the legislative solution or whatever is, is...
You're not even there right now, partner.
Well, that's the purpose of the recommendation.
You, you, do you realize, if we gave you the implementation on what it would take to bring that right now, you would walk out of the room, because you'd be laying off people right now.
No, I, I, well, here is, here's the, here's the, the issue. What the Finance Committee has been recommending, asking for, pressing for, is not the micromanagement of the budget, of the departments, of, that's not what our role has, it's not what we have ever been trying to make our role into. What we've been trying to do is talk about the big picture, which is keeping the tax ceiling away, and letting you folks, on the Select Board, the town manager, the people in the departments that are familiar with what those change, what the policies need to be implemented, what changes need to be done, what needs to be budgeted, not budgeted, taken out, put in, leave that up to you folks, who are the ones who are actually working with the departments and the, and the budget itself. We're saying that we, that, so, for example, you raised, well, we're going to have to lay folks off. That's what you need to do to make sure that we don't run afoul of the tax ceiling is a function of what, of your role. But to say to us that, well, we can't keep the tax ceiling away unless we're going to have to do all these difficult things, I mean, this is what, why we have elected Select Board, to do the difficult thing.
But the question, Maury, is, you know, do, do we do draconian action today to keep a ten-year buffer, or do we do something else that says, we're going to address that issue three years down the road, and we keep a three-year buffer? Because to put a ten-year buffer in place, if that's what the Finance Committee's proposing, is, you know, will require us to do things that people aren't going to like, and they're going to affect all those things we just talked about that we don't want to impact, which is the, the, you know, the, the nature of the town, or the, the aesthetics of the town, or, you know, I mean, because we could go, and I'll give you a perfect example, we could tell Dave Marinelli, you have no money to plant trees. Now, I got to tell you, I've got more comments about, from people in town, about the number of trees we've been planting. You know, it's, it's not a whole lot of money, uh, uh, in the scheme of a sixty-five million dollar budget, but if you're going to do stuff like that, we're going to stop planting trees. And, and, and there's a, one example of, you know, if you do it, here's which impact.
Again... Again. With the the ten-year buffer was something that we came to discussing what the goal should be with our CFO, Mr. Perserzik, and we talked about a long, a a larger window. But we also talked about the possibility of some sort of financial crisis and taking us from a five-year window to zero in one year. And it, the conclusion was, with a ten-year buffer, that was a, the period of time where you still could, based on some reasonable assumptions, actually accurately project that we did have all, close to that amount of time before it starts to get too abstract, and also had a large enough time where if there was some crisis that would knock off eight years from between us and the cliff, that we would still have a couple of years left. At three years, one thing happens and we're over the limit.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let's get some other talk here, too. Can I speak?
Yes.
Okay. You rowdy bunch, start raising your hands. Do you have a ten-year scenario?
That's what the spreadsheet is for.
Do you have a ten-year scenario?
Do I have a separate one?
Yeah.
Uh, no, not in the same vein. I I have a ten-year projected budget.
Projected budget, yeah.
But it does not assume the same, does not assume the same assumptions that they have.
Because what they're asking for, that's, that's a, if you're going ten years, I mean, the market went up, went down a thousand points today.
Yes.
That's the third time, that's the third greatest drop in history today.
We also have a market that's high.
I'm just telling you what it did.
Well, yes, I I.
Well, it's the third greatest.
Drop.
Point drop, but it's not the third greatest percentage.
Okay, well, that's a socratic, we we can argue satics all night long, but still the fact, still the fact. We're, you're talking about something that we can't even come close to controlling is a ten-year window on something that is volatile, is this one, is the property values and world economic thing. I wish, I'd love to be able to say we could do it, but I'm a realist, and it would, it would almost be impossible. It is impossible. We've gotta look, like Mark's, Mark wants to raise the tax rate. That's, that's his cure, to raise the tax rate. I just.
The tax ceiling.
The tax ceiling. I disagree with it, because if we don't take on conservative measures before that, then what are we doing as elected officials and as appointed officials?
And I think that that is the point, really. When we talk about, um, what Mark said to me was, well, we could do these draconian measures now, um, or we could, the alternative is, or we can run into the tax ceiling and then do the draconian measures in three years or four years.
Let me challenge you, let me challenge you with this.
The draconian measures, the the difference between keeping the buffer or, and waiting until we hit the ceiling and then looking at what we're gonna do, is that if we keep the buffer, then the incremental changes, the tough choices get made, well, we'll make a couple tough choices this year, we'll make a couple tou- tough choices next year.
Name the tough choices, then.
You said laying somebody off. That's a tough choice.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, if you went back ten years right now, you're copping people.
You asked me for a tough choice. Laying someone off, I realize that that's a tough choice, but laying one person off this year so that we can keep the ten-year buffer versus, let's just pretend there is no buffer and run into the tax ceiling, and now we have to lay off ten people, twenty people.
Let me put this way, let me put, you can make the ten-year buffer plan, why don't you get it made up?
It's already made up.
Okay, well, why don't you present it to the select board?
We've presented it to select.
We have not seen it.
You've seen it.
No, we haven't.
It was, you could resend it to me.
Okay.
Yeah, because it may have just went to one person?
No, no, we just, we discussed it, yeah.
A ten-year buffer?
Yes, we presented it.
Okay, well, it wasn't, it wasn't accentuated in that value then, okay?
And it's in my report.
Okay, but the problem, the problem.
It's increased by one point seven percent.
The problem is bigger than that, and you know it's bigger than that.
I do.
Okay, you know there's a finite amount of resources that we can suck out of this community, regardless of what plan you call it. The problem is much larger than that. We are not growing, period. You've got to find a way to generate income, or this community is going to shrink.
Okay, so.
Have to. There's no doubt about it.
My question is, do we have a goal under here for development of the water tower property that we've been looking at? Does she continue to pursue that?
Can I, by all.
Sure.
Um, so just hearing a lot of the conversation, um, if our purpose is to try to figure out what the goals are, what the financial goals are, I agree with many of the comments that it should be high level. But I also think that the goals ought to be sufficient, that they live on year after year after year, because to hear kind of the conversation as it's been evolving, I don't think that it's helpful for the goals to change year after year after year. They don't become goals anymore. They become short-term goals, which is not what we're trying to accomplish. So, you know, as both a member of the finance committee and as a resident, I sort of agree with the first two sentences. I think the third one ought to be that it should be a financial goal that the select board, you know, operate, execute, you know, act with a long-term vision, strategic vision. It's really what you have been telling everyone for the last, you know, several years. It's why we have a capital improvement committee, it's why we have now a town building committee, and we should leave it at that. And then, it's really up to Lynn to come up with the options, as as you've recommended. So then, from year to year, we may have to pivot here or there. Maybe taxes go up, maybe we do something else, but we should have that flexibility so that we can continue to accomplish the stated goals that really don't change much year after year, but maybe the tasks do. So, I feel like we've kind of devolved into some of the minutia of executing on what should be our loftier goals, and just kind of focus in on um what we're, I think, trying to accomplish, which is really to, you know, offer a mission statement or a set of very high-level goals that, you know, year after year, we can actually have metrics that we try to measure on.
Okay, so, what it, the line you said, for the third line, was long-term strategic goals for, and how would you phrase?
Well, I, you know, candidly, I I like the first two sentences, but you know, I may potentially tweak them just a little bit. But I think the third one, you know, should be that, um, you know, develop, implement, and execute on long-term strategic financial plans for the town. And that really cuts across everything that you do.
Okay. So, in other words, take all of that development, those lines up till analyze, and just replace it with that without breaking down into pension and liabilities and things like that?
Yeah, because I don't think anyone disagrees that all the things that we're talking about are important. It's really a matter of year over year, how we pri- prioritize them, you know, how we adjust them in the queue of the things that we think are gonna be most beneficial to accomplish the goals that we want to accomplish.
And so, when do, where do we go into, so, and then, you're saying the town manager will come to us and tell us what her plans are to deal with the strategic financial plans for the town.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think it has to be a one-way street. I mean, you know, you certainly, um, either jointly as a board or individually as members can, you know, offer your input to her. Um, but, you know, then she can create the various options, you know, from which you can pick, um, you know, for that given year, and that becomes um sort of that year's short-term plan and execute on these longer-term goals.
And how would you tweak the first few sentences?
Um, I mean, you know, I, for example, I, I don't think I'd use the word high. Um, high doesn't have a lot of meaning. I mean, high level could mean, you know, two cups for every resident. That's, that's high. I don't think that's really what you mean. Probably mean quality.
Okay.
Um, and I would actually get rid of the that is.
Where, okay, that is, okay.
And I would have sustainable and affordable to all residents, because I think that's really captures all the different socioeconomic segments that we have talked about a little bit here.
Mm-hmm. And would you get rid of financial in front of assets?
Yeah, I think that's fair, because I think assets can be historic, cultural, um, financial. Um, and then, I mean, to me, just kind of hearing the conversation, you know, everyone is very much in agreement that we have a long-term strategy that we want to develop and employ and stick to.
Mm-hmm.
And I like the last um sentence, which is, you know, we develop the annual budget. I think that that extends to everybody. It's not just finance or select board, it's to all the residents.
What about analyze any new programs or assets?
Um, to me, that folds into the overarching goals. It really goes to the tasks that we've been talking about.
Mm-hmm. I guess one of the things I was trying to find a way for us to talk about is often programs are developed, and they're not literally reviewed to see if they're still cost-effective. And they just sort of roll in, and they just keep adding on to costs. An example is the, the, what's it called, droids? The, uh, so they, they got a donation at the police department, and that sounded great, because it cost us nothing. Now, what are the costs? Is this really something we need to keep in, or do we just assume that's what the department heads are doing when they review their?
Yeah, and and to me, that's kind of the long-term, you know, strategic plan that you want to implement. I mean, you want to implement and instill a culture of cost consciousness and efficiency within the town.
Mm-hmm. Do you think we should be listing things like the unfunded liabilities or all of that, or is that something that we assume that the town manager is gonna do when she creates the long-term strategic financial plan?
Yeah, I would think that that's something that she's gonna do.
Can I just interject? Because I I I I like your idea, Bill, but I do think that it's still the select board's obligation, in my view anyway, to set some of those, let's call them the more medium-term goals as well, right? I think it's, you are the elected officials to the town, you have to recognize that the unfunded liabilities are a liability that is out there, and it's going to be a burden on the town several years from now. And it seems to me that as a policy matter, which is where I think the select board is, is gonna be strongest, is to say, we need to identify to the town manager that that is a priority for the select board. I think this is, maybe it's priority setting, as you suggested. You know, companies will have long-term goals, you know, a desktop computer, a computer on every desktop. Well, how are we gonna get that in the next three to five years? So, I think that the board has to prioritize among those policies, and that should be part of this discussion, that I think, because she's, the town manager is gonna take the direction from the board on, okay, what's, well, you know, we got a bunch of different ways we can, you know, achieve that long-term sustainability. What do you want us to focus on?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, I think, I don't think you, I think that's your obligation.
So, we do the po- the priority setting as well as the policies, and, but she's bringing to us the strategic plan. And then, from there, she tells us what her task she feels in the plan should be the upcoming year. That's a, that's, seems to be, and so then, we've sort of got the first step going in regards to sentence one and two, and then three. Is there anything missing if we put those three in? Is it's pretty much list everything we need to say as a vision statement or our, our long-term goals? And then you add that strategic, long-term strategic financial plans for the town. Lynn, do you think that's gonna work?
How does that translate into our action plan?
Well, I think it translates into the action plan that we create, we tell her what we feel our priorities are, and she's come in with a strategic plan. She will present a strategic plan to us. We tell her what our priorities are, and then together, we have the next steps or the tasks for the upcoming year. Does that sound right?
Mark, can I just comment, I, something where it's, for me, it's too open-ended. I mean, you know, what we put together for a financial goals, there's just about anything that can be done in this town can fall under those, those categories. I think without saying, you know, our fiscal year twenty twenty-one, you know, focus will be on pension plans or on OPEB, or, you know, just, there's gotta be some high-level but definable area. It might be on developing the water tower, whatever it is. We gotta set something so that Lynn's just not out there, you know, pulling it from a thousand different places, whether it's, it's we wanna control cost, or we want new revenue, or we want, you know, and and I gotta tell you, we need to be able to walk and chew gum, so there probably ought to be a couple of them, which we've done in the past. But but to just say, you know, provide quality services to all residents while maintaining tax and fee schedules sustainable to all residents, doesn't give Lynn enough guidance, in my opinion, nor does it give the, the select board the ability to input the residents' opinions to the system.
Well, that's where priorities come in.
But but, so are we gonna do a two-cycle system where we say, okay, Lynn, here's the, here's the broadest thing, now come back to us with a few things to choose from? Because then we're gonna send her off on effort developing a lot of things, when in fact, we ought to be able to say, we wanna focus on one revenue item, one cost reduction item, and one legislative, or whatever it is, however you wanna do it. I don't wanna pre-dispose.
But if your, you know, the goal was up here, that becomes a task, Mark. Goal, there's a task. You can put as many of them as you want.
No, 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 no. But what I'm saying is, if if it's focus on addressing OPEB, or focus on developing more land.
Right.
You know, at least it gives a little bit of focus to this as opposed to just help us get, get a budget next year that's one point seven five percent increase.
She's got a page, page and a half of the notes that we brought out. OPEB was one of the major ones.
I understand that. All I'm saying is that that as part of our goals, there ought to be the lofty mom and apple pie kinds of things, and there ought to be one or two or three more defined tasks.
What tasks do you want her to work on? You wanna work on an OPEB strategy for a five, ten, and fifteen year? That's a chunk.
Right, but but that's, that wasn't in the original goal system.
Well, we we talked about it here.
I know, we talked about it.
It still falls, it still falls under this global goal.
Right. I just wanna make sure that we are in agreement that there's going to be that added level of definition given to the town manager and the town.
And I think there's only a finite amount of these things that that she's gonna be able to take on with all the other duties, too. I mean, we can't go crazy, because she's splitting her time in seven hundred different directions every day. So, there's a, and you've got all the other goals and stuff within your divisions. I mean, this is echoing all the way down to the bottom of the ladders, which is, it's a major piece of both. You know what I told you when I mentioned before, when they, when the government, the Government Performance Result Act, they basically did what we're doing here, but they would start off as a great big monster goal up here, and then every division developed task statements that supported the goal, like, how do I contribute? And that's the same thing. Basically, when we're saying provide high-level service in residence, that's a global goal in this town. It's gonna filter down to every division. Every division is going to, I would assume that the town manager's gonna ask DPW, say, how do you support this? What's your initiatives? What can you do to help the tax base? Because they expend money. What can you do to save dollars? So, there is a trickle-down. There's a lot that we'll never see that's in there.
See, Richard, but if I can just build on that, because I think, you know, to me, one of the things we could say is, for example, you know, we want, I'm gonna throw in, thirty percent of the budgetary growth next year to come from new sources of revenue. That's something that's, you know, we say.
That's a task.
But but every department can work on that. Every department ought to work on it. And they were saying, look, we're gonna grow the budget the way we we always have, but thirty percent of that increase needs to come from new sources of revenue, whatever that may be. You know, to me, that's more of the real generic and get everybody involved. It's a, it's it's an overall, it's, we don't get the specifics. I'm not telling the park and rec how to do it, not telling the DPW how to do it, or the library or anybody else how to do it. We're just saying, our goal is that thirty percent of our increase in our budget comes from new sources of revenue, which means that our residents only have to pay seventy percent of the.
Yeah, but you're saying each, each division's gonna cut thirty percent?
No, no, it what, I didn't say cut costs. I said, new sources of revenue.
Okay.
You know, we're, we're gonna increase, year over year, our budget goes up, however much it goes up, a million and a half bucks, okay? Thirty percent of that needs to come from new sources of revenue, if that's what we wanna do.
But that's the part where you go to the town manager and said, overall, we'd like to see a thirty percent increase, period. How she does it, that's up to her.
I absolutely agree with you, but it it also allows her, allows the entire town to get involved.
But that's what she takes care of.
Also, I think one of the global warming goals here should be, don't kill the town manager.
No, no, but I'm trying to kill him.
I don't have to do things.
This would be an alternative to some of the other things, but, Rich, you know, because you talked about getting everybody in the, every town department involved.
Well, they, they do get involved.
But it's, it's tough. But it's, it's tough for the DPW to get involved if our goal is resolve OPEB.
I think what we have to listen to is, is what Maury said, which is, you put an overreaching goal, and then she has to tell us what she's able to accomplish and not accomplish and where we are with it. I like the changes you made to it. Why don't I type those up and send it out, and then we can look on policies we've left out there, because you're going to make some recommendation on policy changes. And I think what we have to do is, all of us on the Select Board, and you guys want to do a finance, if you make a list of what you really feel some very important priority, financial priorities are for this year, and then Lynn will look at this as she starts to think about what she thinks doable this year in the way of creating a strategic plan. But we've got to look at a long-term strategic plan, financial plan for the town, based on what those overreaching goals are. And as you said, it's, your goal isn't really to keep it under the levy limit, your goal is to keep the 10-year, to keep any tax ceiling hit out 10 years. And you feel that's an important tool that will do it.
Right, it's, again, what I saw is not lowering taxes or not raising taxes, that, that's not the issue. The issue is not crashing our town into the levy where then our ability to raise taxes is now nil.
Yeah.
And we don't have any more room in our budget. And then we have to start drastic measures and draconian cuts all at the same time rather than doing things rationally.
Yeah.
Are we saying just a 10-year period or a continual 10-year?
Continual perpetual 10 years.
Paul? If, if it was, why didn't we do it 40 years ago?
And that's what they're going to say.
It's all feasible, but there will be cuts to services and savings at times.
Well, other towns have crashed into the limit.
Right, but we are not, we are other towns, we're lawmen, and we're not going to crash.
Other towns had, other towns had mismanagement that took place.
Right, but that's, but that's why we're here.
Let me finish my statement, please. You don't, there's no other town that you can think of in the Commonwealth that is exactly like we are with no land to develop. We've already looked, they're not out there. It's also hitting the tax base.
Well, we received a phone call, Lynn, from who?
Adams.
Yeah, Mayor North Adams, yeah. So they're projected to hit the ceiling in two years.
Right, how much land do they have?
They have a ton to develop, and nobody wants to be there.
Right.
So, it's a different problem.
Well, they can, they can go some other way, but see, that's it, we don't have anything.
Yeah.
That's what's killing us.
I think also reaching out, Lynn's talking about inviting them to come, and really you're going to reach out to them and.
Taking a regional approach, Western Mass, Berkshire County, regional approach.
Yeah, we've also looked, the senior task force is going to be looking at a whole variety of issues that may have some interesting tax excitement in it too, because they may figure out ways to take care of the needs of our seniors that is not being done right now, and it may free up homes for sales, there could be anything coming, but that's, there's a lot of initiative behind that too, is just to go outside the box and explore stuff we haven't explored. I don't, I don't have a problem with your 10-year window. I think it's a fantastic thing to think about.
Well, you're like taking the temperatures of the passengers, guys, just taking the temperature to make sure we're not, that we got that space.
And I think that the, the idea that, you know, we talk about folks wanting to move here, they said you have a town that's similar in the problem they have, but nobody wants to move to that town. We're, we have a town where people do want to move here, and what you point out with our seniors, these are the residents of town that we desperately need to keep, that's what, why we're having, that's why we have, we're trying to get our beautiful senior center put up, because we need to keep our seniors here in the town, we need to keep, to find ways to keep them if their, if their homes that they're in are not manageable, are not suitable to their needs, but we, we don't want them to leave, we want them to stay.
And I'm sure you realize that our number one enemy is our labor. Labor contracts is what is going to take our budget and push it over the hill. It's not our expenditures, it's not buying salt, it's not buying toilet paper, it is labor. And that, that is the one thing that is killing us, and Maureen, I talked, the pension system is going to kill us. It's out there, it's, OPEB is going to get us and our pension system because of the way we're mandated into setting people up on pensions. We have not modified it. We need legislative approval, we're trying to modify how to hire, start hiring temporaries if need be, to get away from this bench, because it, our future looks bleak, and you guys are looking at the same figures we are. I would anticipate you are. You can see the actuarial, was it 36 mil, 38 mil, Paul, right now, on OPEB? And they're real figures. It vacillates a little bit, but it's certainly not going to get too far down, because people are still retiring and taking benefit packages for them.
Medicare for all.
Well, it could be one thing, I mean, that, that would help in some respects, but you know, this is, this is an odd thing when you stop at this state, first state I've ever lived in where public employees don't pay social security. I mean, that's, that's strange. I mean, really, stop to think about that.
There's a few of them.
But I mean, it's the first one I've ever lived, I was shocked when they said they don't pay social security.
Well, that means they don't have the benefits either.
And they don't have the benefits either. That has a whole other dimension on top of our employees demanding benefits now for their future, because they don't have some of the other things that people in other communities have, come.
So, Mark?
I think I alluded to this previously, but do we have the ability to consolidate responsibilities if somebody retires or somebody goes to another town? Excuse me, are we, are we constricted by the, the agreements, the CBAs?
Are you talking about pension or OPEB?
No, I'm talking about everything. So, so if we have somebody who retires, presumably at, you know, kind of a higher position, is there any way to not backfill that spot and consolidate those responsibilities with another person or a couple of people, so we avoid, we avoid salary, obviously, we also avoid the medical insurance and the eventual OPEB and retirement. The other piece of that would be, would we be able to outsource, if we needed to outsource, just to hedge against the OPEB and the, you know, the things that Mark was talking about, medical insurance and the pensions?
Yeah, I think it, I just had a conversation with someone in regards to the, also payment into the pension, but we are allowed, we've outsourced the cafeteria workers, and we're regionalizing some positions with East Long Meadow, and then the dispatch, we were able to bring a lot of people off those roles for that. But as Richard said, we're going to be stuck with some legislative requirements, we have to go to Boston to get that done too.
I mean, we're required to have our own veterans agent, a town this size, you know, huge cost for a town, you know, should we be able to split the veterans agent with three or four towns? We should, but.
In total justification, it, it is money, but it's not a huge cost, that salary.
It's an example, and it's certainly not.
But I mean, don't leave that lingering factor.
Right, you're right, that's not going to make or break the town.
No.
But it's, it's an example.
Well, I think we're going to see, as Lynn pointed out, regionalization sometimes doesn't save us money, but it re-characterizes the cost, which will make a big difference. So if we, if we regionalize the Board of Health, that person's no longer on our OPEB and our pension rolls, they've moved into it, just like with that. But our, our original costs will probably remain the same, things will start to grow, whether we do the vets agent, but it's, it's the long-term strategic plan, and I like the way you laid things out. So I think it's nine o'clock, I think we did, you sort of rewrote this, what I'm going to do is I'm going to send that to everybody, because I'm not the best secretary, and so if I've misdone something, go ahead and send it back to me where I've made a mistake, and then we will, I'll talk to Lynn about how she handles things off in Northampton and see where we can sit and talk about priorities and policies, yeah?
I just want to make one other comment. One of the things that I learned long ago is you can't change something until you measure it, and, and, you know, we don't measure well the cost of, and this isn't a comment on our CFO, the cost of new employees, you know, or the cost of employees, you know, we had a discussion with the, with the school department at last meeting about, well, it's really only one additional person, it's real, you know, really, but, you know, they look at the salary, but it, there are some significant costs, and I think one of the things we can do is ask our CFO to change the way we account for some of these critical costs so that they become more visible to the town.
I have to give him credit, he's already started that in regards to the, the OPEB you've started each.
When the actuarial study is done, it is broken down into sections. A lot of the fee-based sections are separated, the school, teachers are separated from the school, and then there's a generic kind of all other.
Right, but, but for example, we say, look, the employee, a, a real cost of an employee is so much a year, and then you add on all the, all the benefits plus, you know, funding the, whatever it is, I mean, it, it'd just become more visible, I think that's a change that we can implement.
We could do it in policies.
In the, in the budget booklet that goes out as part of the warrant, it is all itemized.
No, no, I get that, I'm just talking about when somebody proposes, I'm going to hire another employee, you know, and, and now also, for example, you tell each department, you know, even though it's centralized, here's what it's costing the town, because the DPW or the library or the school department doesn't see it, because it's all, all centrally. All I'm suggesting is that to control those costs, it would be very helpful to, to, to make them more visible, that's all.
I think one of the measurements that I've been keeping track of is how many FTEs we have every year, and then also there's a number that he hands in the end of September to pension. What is that? That number is equal to all salaries paid plus there was something else.
They ask her a number of benefited employees who participate in the hand-to-accounting retirement system, and then the actual salaries that are budgeted for the fiscal year of those individuals.
And that is how we decide what we're paying in our pension, and we can see that number go up and down every year. So there are things that we measure, we just have to maybe have a policy to ask that to be handed to us every year when it comes to budget time. So we can do things through policies and priority settings. So this is beginning, more ideas, send it to me, we'll set up the next one where we can get into the, how to deal. I think Lynn's going to present policies, but she asked for a little more time. Anything else on goals? Thank you for coming in on a special meeting, it's something I've really been worried about. We've just been leaving it on the table. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
We adjourn.
Zach in.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Yeah, and do you need to close your meeting?
I'm going to take a motion to adjourn.
Do adjourn the Finance Committee, joint participation?
Any discussion? All in favor?
All in favor.
All right.
Thank you, and thank you for joining us.